At 6:30, I will call a meeting to order. Please write me the pledge. All are present, we have a report. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? Set your packet and post it on the level of City Hall.
Also.
Motion by Stapleton, is her second. Wiglight, there's discussion. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the minutes of our regular meeting. It was held on January 11th. Are there additions, corrections, questions? Go ahead. Is there a motion to approve?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
By German, is there a second? Justice, discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the bills to pay. I believe the element of this night, I got a chance to look at it here. Any questions on any of the bills? Is there a motion to approve?
Also move.
Stapleton, is there a second? Wiglight, there's discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ellen Lickness, Liquor Store Report. With the masks and that type of thing. Talk just a little bit louder than what you're normally talking.
January, we had a pretty decent month. We have last year's. I have got two applications for the job, but I still have to run through a couple more.
Questions for Ellen?
I'll maybe just mention a couple things because it relates to the liquor store. I just did some comparison for our liquor store sales. When you compare 2019 to 2020, 19 sales were 1,78,146. In 2020, it was 1,073,840. So we were down slightly, $4,300. But when we look at the 10% markup that we received from the establishments, in 2019, our revenue was 52,718. And in 2020, it was 63,794. So that was up over 11,000.
So I guess in spite of, you know, the restaurants and bars having restrictions for a period of time, you know, it appears from that, you have to make the assumption that at least overall, that doesn't include just bars and restaurants, but places like K&amp;K and everybody that have an operating agreement with the city, that their actual business was up some. Do we know, has there been any significant rise in the price per unit of the liquor? Does it move right or not?
Same, myself. I told my gear guys this how we are going down below what I sold last year.
We've talked about that, so I had to ever put together the statistics.
But then the hours are cut. One hour during the weekend.
That's right.
One hour on the weekends. Where we were is one, three, two, nine. And then we moved up to 10, two, 10.
So one could make the assumption then, because of the change in hours, the liquor store, that maybe some of our other convenience stores would have received a little more business. Okay, any other questions for Ellen? Okay, thank you for the report. Chief Crimmins, please.
Please. I don't have much time. Four of us have got our second COVID vaccinations. We have our first vaccination. We've got two of us who begin the second bill tomorrow and one that will be very first bill on Thursday. So by the end of this month, we should all have our second vaccination. Later on, we can, I see we have a contract signed, you want to do that right now?
Let's do that right now. I think we've got some time to do that. Can you explain, you know, the purpose of the contract and what the renewal, just the renewal process? We're looking at a totally new contract.
It's just a new contract. It's before background checks for the department. It's a paid annual type of contract. I've talked a lot about police department, they use it, and they said it's around $125 or something. So that's what the average cost would be. That would cover the entire background check as well as social media check and a credit report. So we're wanting to do credit records and social media check right now. That would be something new that I think we, I think we're going to be required to do credit check in the upcoming months. If there's law enforcement training, we're not doing that right now. But it's not a annual fee, it's just every time you use, you get charged.
I think that's stated in the agreements, what the fee structure is. Aaron, do you have any comments on these at all? So I guess is there a motion then from the council to authorize the mayor to sign the agreements with Guardian Alliance Technologies for the search of the, I guess it would be the employee search?
Employee background check.
Employee background checks.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Solberg, is there a second? Seconded by Apple, discussion?
As a, ordering on this credit check one, you have to get their permission to do that one, don't you?
Yeah, we do. We do, we have to sign something.
But if they don't, if they don't sign it, then you don't do the credit one?
I've never had anybody not sign it. They've always signed it. And it wasn't happened. They wouldn't have to, but I think it's interesting, assuming that works for law enforcement sometimes.
At some point, that's what they are.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Now, these contracts are just for law enforcement at this time. As you recall, we had some discussions about potentially doing it for all city employees, but we're not quite there yet to. We've got to change our policies before we actually enter into a contract. Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other questions for Kim? The statistics, any comments on those at all?
They're a little bit for last month, and I think we're kind of going in the same direction this month. And we had some more to draw the rest last month, and we already had some this month. So the rest are on the update right now.
Okay, don't see any other questions, Jim, so thanks.
Thank you.
Street Safety, Myron Dowd. Speak up as loud as you can, Myron.
I'm not a whole lot of support. Did need to handle that as of today. So we got a full crew back on the stage.
Yeah, I guess we can deal with that now. It would be travel approval. And I guess we haven't traveled very far since the matter of, you know, the time authorization for doing the MSHA training in February 18, 2021. Is there a motion to approve our city employees to attend that same training? Motion by Justice, our second. Solberg, discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have, still have some trees that we're working on here.
Yeah, we got, actually, we discussed that a lot of the winters today. We're going to do that one cut down. We got that, I don't know, about 200. We'll do that one down. We're going to, we have, um, in the winter, we are doing lines and around lights on early pictures. So we didn't have a line for them, so we did that. We got, wait, wait, not wait, actually, we decided to finish up the far lines and around lights. So then the far trees, we have a whole hundred.
Questions for Myron? I guess let's get into the bid solicitation for the street patching repair and also authorization for the shop steel siding. I think we can do that here, probably got enough time to do that. You decided last year, both for the chip seal and the street patching and repair, that we were going to start the bid process earlier to ensure that we got more than one bid. So I think it's important that we look at, you know, getting that out there now. And I guess, I think we talked about it, and I think we want to have the option of them putting the code on that they did last year as a, so we've got an idea of how much the extra cost is and see if we can justify it.
For a price with the policy on top of this, something we do this time. It'd be nice to have that, 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 it reduces a lot of the cost mainly, but it also looks very nice.
The other thing I think that you know is when we treat it in that way, it seems like more of the chips stay in the road versus having to be swept up all the way. That's, we really discovered this last year, that whole process.
Yes, yeah. Compared to years past, we sweep the truck, I would have to, we had a lot of truck, a year on there. This year we had two left over, so we, we, we did it last year. So hopefully, we can save it all for this year, save my, so we, mustn't do it that way. They come with a higher expense usually. Compared to what we're getting, trying to go, they turned off good. So that's, so.
What section of town are we scheduled to do here this year?
We're going to be up on Hospital Hill. Actually, we've got it combined in, we're hoping, we're supposed to do this section Hospital Hill. But hopefully, we'll take Hospital Hill and use the rest to start fixing something. So we got a little bit lost in bits all the way through. So we did that on schedule. Hospital Hill can now probably be on schedule because we have 10 projects we got going on. So if we did that this year, and we do that long here, and get it back on rotation, we should have been, and lined it all together, and hopefully, we can go face out here and spend a lot of chips on it. But we kind of waste the chips on Hospital Hill.
So the number of blocks that we're proposing in 2021, how would that compare to the number of blocks that we actually did in 2020?
I can't remember what we had a blockage from last year. I think we had, this year, 56 blocks we done this year. Last year, I think, I got to look at my chips over from last year to this year. I know it's 56 blocks full, and this year, and then maybe 28 for Hospital Hill. We just did Hospital Hill. So if I, we did prices on the full, but it's going to drop off separately. So I might not do the section Hospital Hill.
So what sections are we proposing to do in 2021? I would go again.
Lightly, just do Hospital Hill.
Just Hospital Hill, the area up there?
Yeah, we got bigger firsts, and I'm going to, I'm going to use the, get that fixed accordingly. Put boxes on chips on. Save them a little, please.
I guess we have authorization, our motion to authorize bid solicitation for both the street patching and repair and chip seal. And indicated by the street superintendent, it'll be for the Hospital Hill area.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
By German, is there a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by Solberg, discussion?
Myron, did you guys sweep that before they put that box seal on to get some of the new props?
We did with the, the bid we got last year. So before, we do sweeping before and after, it saves us money that way. But we had no way to go back on, to say, well, this is going bad, this is what happened. So we put up this, we did have issues, they flung it.
They slapped it after.
They saved a lot of maintenance, a home machine, wear, get around, not like that. We had to come back on, and have to come back and fix it, something to come before they're saying, well, even if it's, you know, they, they were all, they hadn't helped. This way, they, they were locked, they had to finish.
How are they picking those chips up in these windows?
They bring in dry hold rooms. They're on three, they're on three, non-veterans, they're here, they're in three non-veterans. Pretty much the whole top room.
Yeah, how do they pick them up, they're dry rooms?
No, they got the same style, we have their dry hold, their truck, their truck style.
Oh, okay.
So then they got a back that they went on tape, so they ran through them. But they did, that was all with their, so if that way we did that last year, we didn't have no problem with it that way. So compared to, you know, so where they're, they're, there's a problem.
Any other discussion? No other discussion. Proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I got time for one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, the service from streets? Did you talk about that in the morning?
Um, yeah, I guess to bring the council up to date, you're aware, down at Newland City Shop, we do have a camera system that we are observing, see what kind of garbage goes into the dumpsters. And the signage is there as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed. We had an instance where there was some carpet was put in there. And our staff, garbage staff, is under the understanding that carpet is not allowed. But specifically, when you look at our ordinance, it doesn't specifically exclude it. And Aaron, I think you got a chance to look at that. So we may, if we want to keep carpet and door covering out of our garbage pickup, I think we need to look at modifying our ordinance to include those items so it's specifically stated. So I guess we can have a discussion here. We're not ready to pass an ordinance, but if we need to make a change, and we get the consensus of the council, and do something for action in our March meeting.
Yeah, if you look at the ordinance printed out, 1816, 025, if you go down to fourth paragraph, it has a lengthy, the second sentence has a lengthy list of items that are not allowed in the same dumpsters. And like Terry said, we had an instance of some kind of carpet being put in it. And it really doesn't fall under any of those definitions. And so I guess with Myron's input and any of your guys' ideas, I'd like to make sure that we're very clear on that because it will only help police officers and me if we need to prosecute something. If we have a clear list of items that you guys want down, then don't step in there. And also, I think that the sign potentially might need to be updated this summer once we determine how this will be changed. So that's my comment.
I think if we, we're going to decide not carpeting, I think we need to put, you know, all four curvings because if somebody replaces a little volume or something like that and gets out, I think we have to keep in mind too, we do allow for spring cleanup every year. So if somebody has those types of things, it's a matter of, we have to find a place for them until we pick them up in the spring when we do our spring cleanup. Because that's certainly something that we would pick up in the spring cleanup. But it's a matter of storing it in the garage or outbuilding or something for a while until we do the spring cleanup, unless people want to take it out to, to the landfill on their own, they can do that. But it's going to be a fee for them to look and do it.
Right now, it's way older than the forms. They used to take it in for the trash, because they could do that. The company decided to quit taking it. So it's paid charges. So we can't reach out and tell them, like, we're getting charged for them to take it out of the trash. So it was a product, which sometimes no cash would vary. Either way, the guy started to give it back, and I would be pulled in because of, like, we're getting charged. So I'll, I'll.
Do you have a list of items? Do you have a list of items that they charge us for?
Tires, tires in there, rims, wood, yeah, everything that's on there.
Everything is on. So can you take this list and add whatever changes they've made so we can be inclusive? Or is it just for them?
They look more of the only thing that's not on our list that, that engage.
And the discrepancy with the sign that I noticed is simply that it says, no dumping, and then it says household up here, but then just materials down here. And I think there's some probably confusion when you look at that about household materials being dumped.
Yes. Micros to go back to, you know, and we, they go off, so it's a long delay. Why they do, they do, so I can do all the recycling. But everything on this one is only for color. We got to add the sign, take that out.
Myron, is there any language second, maybe the, the, well, that other things should be, miss something? Or do we need to be very specific?
Probably wider with that gray area.
I think, but I think some of our organs is not. I feel like I want to answer, goals would be great, but more specifically can be great. But if we have to be generalized in some sense, I think that we have to be. Because I can't, we can't list every possible expected thing that somebody might dump. So I know that's not a very good answer to that, but.
But then some of that stuff that they might dump, they might take in the regular household on the landfill. So you have to know what they will take out there, you know?
And that's exactly what I said to Myron. So if Myron can let us know what that is, so we can add those in, or they're excluded, we can be more specific in that route. Then I guess it would be a determination from you guys of what we can or cannot dispose of at the least one cause.
Suppose that the consensus of the council then, that we have here wrapped up, changing our ordinance here for us for action? And this is the final check. Can we get a list from the county landfill, just to double check?
Could we have some time to think of one item, block? Just in case some, something else? Maybe we got covers?
Well, I think, could we, could we get that landfill list to me now? And I could draft that as a first reading, and then it can be addressed as a first reading next month. And you guys can look at this and see if there'd be a proposed addition at that point. And then we'll just have to know, Chief Crimmins, that at this point, those are left off, and there can't be tickets for floor coverings or carpet at this point, until, until the ordinance would be revised.
Because I know, are they, they're allowed in there as of right now, right?
Oh, yeah, you could put horse, horse and wood, horse and wood with a regular household trash. Like you got your whole top, you're saying, you have to get wood in there. If anything, horse and wood in there, long as they ask that they put it in the trash and outside. Yeah, the weight, that's stacked up quite high. So long as they go in, they can be accepted over there.
One other issue that I think that we have sometimes is the city workers who are on the trucks, knowledge of what is accepted and not accepted at the point, per point. And that would be our regular pickup. They need to know what they can't take and be able to tell residents that. And then on our, our spring cleanup, when it's more open, what's accepted in addition to what's normally accepted, but what's still excluded. This makes sense because I think there's confusion sometimes about just what people get told from this person to this person to this person. So once we have this put together, I don't know, just a general internal memo to everybody, hey, this is into our question. Because the person who had the carpet issue said, well, we once tried to do some carpet during citywide cleanup, but they told us it didn't have to just be doing citywide cleanup, but they could leave it in the garbage regularly. So there's just some confusion there. And if we just try and get on the same page across the board with everybody, it'll, it'll be so much easier for our residents.
The same one, talking about public cars, they have public cars, they move the trash. It's not the battery. Cars all go in trash, mostly over there, so, so, yeah, they move the trash. We'll run a trash truck, they're on the spring cleanup, we're going to move trash and we do with other stuff. Like you both are the term now. So a lot of people just don't know what to do with it. It's a lot of things, plastic toys. So, yeah, they don't want it. So, yeah, that would, that we need to make a.
Okay, well, fair enough. We agree for our meeting, changing that, that ordinance to be more specific. In the meantime, I'll get the list, and I'll make sure that Aaron gets that. Any other items for Myron? I guess you're going to be sticking around for some future conversations we're going to have here too. So there's some other items we need to deal with here. Is there any other thing specifically to the street department for safety for Myron? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, since it's time, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for seven, I think we'll move on to building permits, which there were none for, for January. And then we do have our January finance report in your packet. Look at that and take action on that. I guess it's the first month of our fiscal year. You have some numbers as to where we ended up in 2020?
Yep, I don't have everything finalized for the year, but a couple of things just to point out. With general sales tax revenue, we ended the year at about 1,180,000 in 2020, which is actually a little bit lower than where we were in 2019. In 2019, we had 1,188,000. So we were down about 8,000 from the previous year. And then the 1% gross receipts tax on bed, board, and booze, we were actually up on that compared to 2019. We ended 2020 with 81,837. We ended 2020 with $81,837, and 2019 was $76,029. So about $5,800 increase for that tax. Also, just to give you kind of an update on what we received for the COVID reimbursement program through the state, we were reimbursed for a total of just under $395,000. And the way that breaks down is about $335,000 is for our police department wages and benefits. We got a little over $1,600 for mine wages and benefits, a little over $1,800 for some park wages, when the street guys closed and opened the parks, a little under $700 for council wages. We had about $11,500 in administrative leave, so employees that had to take leave due to either a positive test or exposure. The portion of our dispatch contract with Roberts County, we were reimbursed $17,916. And then just for various supplies, we received $26,184. All complaints that I submitted were...
Any questions on the finance report? Is there a motion to approve? Rick Leiner, second. Sober, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most motion carried. It's seven o'clock, and it's the time and the place for a public hearing regarding the application for sale of malt beverage for the Highway Ten Casino LLC, Ryan Fisher. And the application is for retail, on off sale malt beverage in South Dakota Bar Wine. Is there a representative here from Highway Ten Casino LLC? Can you just kind of explain the business and the nature of the request?
What was that?
Can you explain your plans for the business there and the nature of the request, and what you're planning on doing there?
We're going to have a casino, just a state lottery machine casino. What I plan, it's going to be by the old, the Roseley, or the flower shop, the old flower shop.
So, and how are you planning on doing the sale of the malt beverage? Are you going to have somebody there selling it over the counter?
Yes.
How are you going to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions from the council? Is there any input from the public, since it's a public hearing? Input? Okay, is there a motion then to approve the application of Highway Ten Casino LLC? Motion by Sober, is there a second?
A second.
Stapleton, discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most motion carries. Okay, let's move into the water sewer department, Gary Spencer.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
We're coming ready for a conference tonight, very soon. We're all here for the party, but for the weather. We're all the, 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 the. Far they know, we're hoping to have a place there.
Because I think we had a conversation beforehand, we've got some houses with the soil as dry as it is. I think what's happening is contraction or soil freezing, the dryness of the soil. The soil is separated from the foundation, the cold is penetrating down farther than what normally would. And that's been some of the issues, where some of the lines going into the houses are freezing. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I did get a call at five o'clock Sunday morning, wondering what was wrong with the city's water. I didn't call Gary at five o'clock.
Good.
Anyway, I don't know. I think the word will get out, but, you know, I hope the public wants to avoid that. I think everybody should look around their homes with the lack of snowfall and that type of thing. Right, you could scoop up some snow around the foundation of the house, and that type of thing provides some better insulation, especially if you know where the water line is coming in your house.
That'd be good. Yeah, if you know where the water line is coming in, take some of that old, twisted insulation and put that against everything.
Anything else for Gary? Okay, we do have Mark Owen here that's got a request from the city. And maybe I think we can ask Mark to come forward and Gary, if you can stand by and give your perspective of a particular incident, the place, your department, you could make your presentation to the council.
Well, basically, this is a situation from the Highway Ten construction situation, and the D tour that kind of passed our home in our area. One of the trips, a semi tractor took out the hydrant on the corner. The construction was between 2018 and 19, and nothing happened with that hydrant, except it sat as a water service from the time it was hit, three different projects, until October 2020. At that point, I was walking to work and found out that there was a project going on with a three carer. When I came home that morning, or at noon hour, my water was leaking right in my house. I had no knowledge of the project going on, or anything happening, and now I have another bill to make care of. So my biggest concern is the lack of communication and the fact that I find out I have a $100 bill, that I didn't know that it was my responsibility, but I still have to deal. So that's where my concern is, and why I'm requesting some feedback on that, maybe.
So maybe Gary, if you could give the perspective on that project and out of place, who was involved, you know, with the replacement there, so the council's got that perspective as well.
Uh, fire hydrant hit place, anyway. And I determined that it's not due, that's why the water service signs put on. It took a while to determine, given that Google is at fault, who's going to pay for the replacement, but it takes a while. Finally got, got a fire hydrant, and then the big thing is finding someone who will take it. Contacted a few different contractors, and they found out that the major power outage cables run right alongside the fire hydrant, they went sick, they went sick. Finally got hold of Lee Anderson, Serak Yaski, and he agreed to do it. Time went by, weeks, you know, hurt him, called again. Yep, they'll do it. Finally, days of the replacement, he called me eight o'clock that morning, and that's when I found out that we were going to replace it that day. I didn't have much time to inform the residents in there. There were seven houses that were affected. Mike and I did go and knock on the doors, definitely good, one people, the water was shut off. Started the game, and very carefully dug up the old hydrant. We shut the water, the water main out, put it, replaced the fire hydrant, they got everything done, and backfill, probably by 11 o'clock. So then, procedure for Mike and I is we open up one water valve, we open up the water deep tap, and the reason we open it up really slow is to get rid of the water, take our time. We don't want to stir up anything, we don't want to damage, that's the standard of the trend. We let the water run out of the hydrant, and Mike convinced by his eyes that Serak, he convinced by the weather coming out of the hydrant involved, that the garden was watering on, and, 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 and the snow cased. We let that run for four hour and a half, till the water was, what I considered to be good quality, and the water doesn't line. Once that, what happened, we shut the fire hydrant off, put the vacuum valve, and opened up one, by doing that, it diminished the amount of pressure put upon household, and shut off. Weather, that, doesn't belong, we could not control. When Serak, he shut off, I looked at it, and he pointed out that it shut off, it was in very bad condition to begin. And it wasn't a matter of buying for facility class, we don't, it's a very large concern that's moved the fault. That's all, that's the figure we use, the thing we ought to use, and, 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 and quite a...
Okay. Mark, upon hearing that, do you have any other questions, Gary, regarding the circumstances and kind of the process and procedure there?
It's basically just, I mean, we don't know, that's where it is. And I didn't know anything about it before, it's a bigger issue. I mean, it's a year and a half been the process, and we have no information on any of our seven houses, so... Who normally hires the first job off the residence? A homeowner?
Normally does.
So we just went and fixed it, just because? We didn't, Mark hired, Mark hired.
We just, we just...
It, it just started leaking that afternoon after the hydrant was replaced, and I talked with Johan at that point, and he said it's most likely because of the water hydrant being replaced, because it normally would not have happened other than having a pressure issue. And basically, he found somebody that would be able to do it, because he wasn't able to.
So who ended up doing the work then, Mark?
Serak.
Serak, so, same people that...
Same people.
Were they, did it happen simultaneously, or they come back later after it was leaking, or did they, was it?
Came back a few days later, picture.
It wasn't the same day, I know that.
It was good.
It was at least a week later.
All, all forty hours, and I, 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 I don't get it, a few days later.
And it really wasn't, it wasn't a big leak, it was just bubbling out the edge of the sidewalk, but it really wasn't a major thing, it looked like, you, and plus, I don't know where it comes from.
So, you know, we, I think you were given a copy of the ordinance as far as, you know, city not being liable for damages. I guess, given the nature of the situation, it was such that, you know, I think your curb stop was in pretty bad condition, but it wasn't leaking prior to the time that they did the excavation. So excavation, you know. So I guess it's up to the council to decide, you know, what they want to do. I think from the research I've done, I think the cost of the materials is somewhere between $450, $500, as far as the bill, and the rest of the bill is probably labor.
I calculated it was $384.
$384?
That's what I came up with, of the materials.
Okay. So I guess, what's...
I have like a quarter of the bill.
Is yours a recommendation or a motion or what?
I guess it's not accustomed to us to do this, but during the circumstances here that it happened the same day that it was turned on, I don't think any of us can say that what caused it for sure, but it's a big coincidence that it happens, I guess I would think that we could get a little quarter of the bill back to them. That's really the seven, or the seven, or the materials, I guess, cost.
Set a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sober to reverse Mark Owen for the cost of materials to repair his curb Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Apple, discussion. Discussion. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Most, most carries. Okay, I guess, city will be sending you a check, I guess, for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, it's 7:15, and we've scheduled a review for the conditional permit for the homeless shelter, do we have representatives here? Hello. Good evening, welcome. Why don't you have a seat? Thanks for being here this evening. Last year, when we initiated work with the tribal officials on the warming house, we agreed that it'd be a good idea to touch base, kind of get through the winter, and see how things are working, and, you know, get your feedback on it, and, you know, get some feedback, you know, from the council, from what they've been hearing as well. And then also, you know, look at if there are some potential changes that we want to enact, how best to do that, you know, according to the ordinance. So that's what we hope to accomplish here this evening. So I guess we're really to listen to you begin with, and give us your feedback as to how operations have been going so far this winter.
He said very well, in my opinion. We haven't had any, um, problems with, um, there's not been any major disruption or anything like that. When it's been cold, I've been letting them stay, when it's like below zero, like, it's very normal, because when they do go, they tend to get, oh, they just need a dead normal cold. So that's why I was hoping that we could turn the change to include the neighbors, so that I wouldn't feel any violations, you know, every time.
Are you, can you staff it 24 hours a day?
Yeah, I have enough staff. The business shift is from workhouse, and I have three to four people. And Mike and me, they're usually sleeping. If they're there during the day, they sleep clean, just, they sure get like, they're home.
Well, do we have any feedbacks from the police department at all?
I think this year they've been open, last year, I don't think they were ever open during the day. I think this year they've been open a few more times during the day. We haven't been called over there that many times. There's been one major incident over there that I know of. That was a, I'm not going to say the name, but there was a male that got in, went into the female's sleeping quarters. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, no, I mean, I found out to the resident.
Okay, yeah. That, that would be the only report that we've taken over there.
I mean, in terms of the hours, a lot of that was determined based upon the prior warming house at the old library, there were no hours, and there was a lot of laboring. Well, in front of that building, businesses, residents, government offices in that area, and that's what the thought process...
And that's what the thought process behind limiting it, the hours that we had to initially use was, was to prevent the loitering. I guess if you have suggestions on how you're going to stop that, if you expand those hours. Or are the hours only going to be expanded at a certain temperature drop or something like that? That, that was the thought process behind the hours. Maybe this whole round, they admire the rule. And the last year they have a lot more freedom because they post that piece. And they're like, you know, gee, we have this many rules and, you know, I don't, what story goes down there, but technically. Or prior to that, I don't know what I could know of what goes on now. And we keep a pretty great, we know what's happening, they know what's happening. They know not to, if they're a veteran, they know not to. And I remind them, so they teach us to be not to come into that part or come into that part. And remind them of the property next door. And you're going to do. And you know. But they help, they help try to understand.
So with the cold staff that you've got now, are you open during the daytime?
Yeah.
So, you know, technically you're in violation of our agreement. I guess that's why we're having this conversation this evening.
Well, we did, we did at the last meeting, we did mention that, or Merna mentioned that. I'm just thrilled.
We, we haven't given that all the nation as a city, but we recognize, you know, while you're doing it, that's why we're having the conversation here to see if we need to modify the agreement that we have here to allow for that. But in order for us to modify this green agreement, we have to have a public hearing. If we modify this in any way, we, we went through that process again, but we started this for years. So I guess the next step would be for us, if that's what your request is, and for us to, to get the proper notice out and, and notify the adjoining property owners and have a public meeting if we're going to look at it, taking some changes here. I guess the feedback that I've got pretty much is that, again, when there was some litter in that thing, but it was brought to your attention and you took action, and I think you're doing a good job of keeping the litter picked up, you know, on the property there, you know, the adjoining properties. Well, it's there, it's only there for a short amount of time, so you must be going out on a daily basis and picking up the litter. So that's, that's very good.
They do. They'll do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they know mine.
I think that's confirmed pretty much the police department from your observations too, isn't it?
And, and for the most part this year, there hasn't been any loitering outside. I, I haven't seen them standing off the side of the building or anything like that. So I agree with what you said.
But I know it's a concern among the neighboring businesses, you know, that if they stand around, they're going to stand around, stand around in front of the shelter and not in front of other businesses, if somebody is trying to get into businesses, especially during times of COVID, maintain social distancing and that type of thing, they just, they're going to stand around for a period of time. It should be right in front of the shelter.
I'm under the, I don't know very much, however. Yeah, I have a sign in the front window that says loitering. What I would suggest, because of the process of these people who do amendments, if there's anything, I know when Merna and the chairman were there about two months ago. There was some amendments and different changes, but hours were one of them. But we should try to get this as a whole piece of documents that we don't have to go back and amend every year. And so what I would suggest is if there are anything other than the hours that you'd also like modify within, that the city is the same, if there's anything that we'd like modify within this, let's get it discussed and let's start the process for scheduling another public meeting so that the neighbors have input and it potentially can get passed with the modification. At that point, I would think that after running it for two years, I know this is your first year, but there's been two years of running it, that we should be in pretty good shape for future operations without a modification.
So really the initial question is, you know, do you want to open twenty-four seven during the allotted timeframe, November through April? Or do you want to have a, a temperature situation, you know, daytime temperatures?
Oh, my experience of working with people, um, the one thing that is good is there's more than one. And there's less problems coming out of that. And so if we were able to extend it throughout the entire season, that, that would be.
It would be simple.
Yeah. Okay. You need a word choice there that I have certified, you could extend throughout the season, so twenty-four seven throughout November through April. I just wanted to make sure of that. Um, and then I guess Chief Primen, would you have any recommendations from what you've been involved with in the last two years?
No, I wouldn't have any problem with that.
Okay, well, let's move then towards a public hearing and on our March meeting. And I think we've communicated with Merna the timeframes, and I think she has the actual application. Or if you have it or offer that works. And then we'll schedule a public hearing on our March meeting and we'll try to get this worked out in such a way that, you know, it's a little more of a dynamic, flexible document that any little change, you know, we don't have to continue to have public hearings. Does any other council member have any other input? Okay, well, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we allow some time at our public meetings for some public input. Is there any public input this evening? We do have a seven thirty scheduled time to hear from some guests from Northwestern Energy, so that's coming up here shortly, but I thought there's some public comment. We certainly gave it at this time. Any public comment? Okay, city attorney, you have any?
Okay. I actually do have one question.
Okay.
A few months back, we had talked about amending our place ordinances to specifically describe what type of materials are allowed. She used my, I have been on a search to determine what other communities allow and don't allow. And I'm coming up with just the generalized ordinances that do not allow barbed wire or ring wire type protection stuff. Unless it's shown that it's for business protection purposes. So if there are materials that you guys were specifically thinking of that we would not allow or construction expenses would count, I guess I'd like input from the council because I'm running into the only restriction we have are hardwired ones.
Well, the only thing I say is that we've had some people construct fences out of pallets. And I just don't think that we should allow pallets as fencing material.
So like pallets or what are the issues with pallets or that they're treated with oil and you don't know what's in them? Or do you want or other treated material?
Well, it's just that.
They say when it gets burned.
The thing is pallets weren't designed as fences. They were designed as pallets.
Thanks. So is there anything else that you guys were thinking of that you wanted to? Materials that considered rough cut wood? That would do maybe materialize that out or?
I know, couldn't, couldn't you say something like traditionally? Traditional fencing material?
Let's be gentle.
I'm fine. Um. I just, yeah. I can put that, then we'd likely need a definition of that as like wood. With the exception of pallets. I just, it's not, we've got some time before spring comes, when things might be broke. Um, I just wanted to address it because I've been looking. And like I said, the only materials that we could be part of are barbed wire. But we had pallets or, or materials of pallets or materials of pallets are built from. I don't think that that's rough cut wood because you can get rough, rough cut wood that's not pallet.
But would you want that as a fence?
Cedar, there's rough cut cedar that we use.
Yeah.
Oh, your cedar that's rough cut. Or it's rough. I know there's a lady on the east side, she had made a fence out of pallets, but she took it all apart, I believe. I guess I would have to look at that and see what happens. Like, you know, I didn't think I would do that, but she stained it and so it's like. Maybe just a little more discussion in.
I guess I just want some guidance. I'm not going to do with what I've got, we wanted to address that. And I looked for different ordinances that provides some guidance. And I just found that they guard the barbed wire and the circular wire. So if there's other types of materials that you guys were thinking of, if you can provide that, more of the pallets, that would be great.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Erin. We have as our guests this evening via Zoom, I see Reed McKee and Dan Roush. I've had a couple of conversations with Reed over the phone in recent weeks and communicated via email. Both Reed and Dan are with Northwestern Energy and they're a major energy provider in South Dakota. About, I guess it's been nearly a couple, year and a half ago at least anyway, they had a conference call associated with a number of towns in the area here and looking at potentially developing of natural gas in some rural communities. And they had a follow-up Zoom call that Elderman Stapleton and I participated in. So for the sake of the other council members here and the public in general, I've asked via Zoom, the folks Reed and Dan from Northwestern to kind of give a general concept of the project, what, how potentially it would work. And fifteen minutes or so, so they're here with us via Zoom, so the floor is yours. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, by way of introduction, I'm Reed McKee. I am the director of business development for Northwestern, specific to this project, have kind of been working on this for the last couple of years. I believe there's a few of you in the room that may have got to meet with us a couple of years ago when we were out, when the concept was kind of being born, if you will, through a lot of different meetings, we've had an opportunity to rethink some of the pieces based on feedback from communities, and that's what we want to share today. I'd like Dan Roush to introduce himself, also a member of Northwestern. Dan, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Roush. I'm the treasurer of Northwestern. And, you know, so I, I've been at Northwestern probably a little over twenty years now. And Reed will lead the discussion tonight, and I'll kind of talk about the finance parts and things like that. And then obviously we'll take any of you guys' questions at the end. But anyway, I'm the treasurer. I live in Sioux Falls and I'll refer to Jeff when he goes to me.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. I'd like to kind of show you the presentation. But it looks like the host would have to help me on that. If I can share my screen. Is that Amber? Is that you?
Yeah.
Are you guys hearing me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Is, is somebody looking at if they can?
Yeah, I have rejected to see if we can have you take control of the screen here.
And while she's working on that, maybe just a little bit of history. Like I said, a couple of years ago, this idea was born between my vice president, Kurt Paul, another director, the organization director of projects, Lane Nichols, and myself. Actually, I'd sat down and met with a contractor and discussed gas expansion and, you know, what are some of the possibilities to get it into rural communities in some fashion to, to take it out further? One of the reasons that we chose to do that or wish to do that is the amount of calls that we receive. With the interest of expanding to rural South Dakota, because a, a lot of the feedback we're getting is, is they feel like they're at a disadvantage because a lot of businesses that come and look at the state, in the state to maybe expand their business is, and to start in their communities, one of the first questions they ask is, do you have natural gas? And when a community says no, they seem to pick up and move on. So that's what kind of bore the idea. I've got a slide that kind of says that. I've actually got a couple of slides. I keep checking to see if it's going to allow me in. That I was going to share that had some of the average costs of some of the different energy. Uh, that people would use to heat their home, electric, propane, fuel oil, or natural gas. And it kind of gives the average bill for each. And as you can imagine, natural gas and electricity, both are really stable. Is how what it depicts, natural gas being, being the cheapest alternative of the four. But propane and fuel oil, the last couple of years have actually came into pretty good check, so there's nothing wrong with those as sources. But they do demonstrate in the slide that there is a little bit of volatility. Are you seeing my screen now?
There you go. We can see it with, yeah, we can see the center pretty well. Of course, the slides on the left-hand side we can't see, but there you go. We can see that pretty well.
That, pretty good is?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was just the first slide talking about the capacity and the economic development constraint that has been felt. This is that slide I was trying to describe verbally. That shows the consistency of, like I say, the gas and electric, the average cost per customer for an annual year of what it would cost. So it just shows the competitiveness of natural gas, okay? This slide in particular, one of the pieces of feedback that I got from a lot of the communities was that some of the numbers that we were using, it really showed a differentiation between gas, natural gas and propane, and they didn't think that was necessarily fair. And so I did some digging and kept digging till I finally found, you'll see at the bottom of the slide, the source, eia.gov. And this particular information is directly related to South Dakota averages, not Midwest averages. So the blue line depicts natural gas delivered to a residential customer on average in the state is right at, currently right at seventy-two cents in 2021, when I just talked to our great guy, and you can see it's fairly flat. Propane, what is being demonstrated here is not cost per gallon, it's actually cost per therm. Um, and in the heating world, what's important is the BTU content, um, that is being burned to create the energy, create the heat, uh, from it. So propane has ninety-one thousand five hundred ETUs in a gallon. And where a therm has a hundred thousand. So this is price adjusted for the same hundred thousand terms of propane as natural gas. And you'll see the little table, uh, down here that gives the cost of propane. Average cost of propane over the last five years per gallon was a buck forty-one. But the cost per therm would be the equivalent of buck fifty-four. And you can see those averages over a five-year period, ten-year period, and a fifteen-year period. And that's more just for information, I've not spent a lot of time on that. But it is important to know, I'm talking, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-two cents delivered for natural gas here. Later, when we bring up some numbers, it's going to be higher and we'll explain a little bit more, uh, why that is. Uh, Mayor Kerry asked me to be very succinct and kind of touch on the overview of the project. So we're not going to get into a lot of detail. We've studied this from a utility perspective because of how our financing is. It never quite worked. Under the model that we're proposing is the creation of encouraging the communities to create a nonprofit entity. Governed by a board. And Northwestern would be a consultant or a contractor, um, if the board so chose, okay? Dan will talk a little more about the financing. So conceptually, that's the idea behind the project. And what I'd like to say is Northwestern's role at this point in the way that we have analyzed this many different ways. Is actually to step back and allow the formation of a different entity to actually own the assets in order to bring the, the gas. Like offering our subject matter experts in the business to help make that happen. Because the cost to hire that kind of expertise, um, can kill a project in a hurry, uh, for it. So with that, I'm going to have Dan just quickly at a high level walk through a very high-level business plan on how we looked at this to see if it made sense or not.
Dan, yeah, yeah, I, you know, I, it, it, I'll just take a step back and say, so our, for, you might be wondering, like, why does Northwestern, you know, there are these other towns around? They just come in and, you know, build the, build the infrastructure, charge us rates and, uh, and do what they do in, in these other towns. And so I think it'd be helpful if I just tell you, on our regulated model, the way, the way we have to finance a project is, is that I have to finance it with fifty percent debt and fifty percent equity. And so when we go in and do debt, you know, for thirty years on, you know, on a construction design like this. You know, I'd be able to put fifty, Reid probably told you this, or he will, you know, as we go through this, but, you know, this project is give or take a hundred million dollars. So to do this on a regulated basis, I would have to put fifty million dollars in and, at, with debt. And even get cheap debt right now, so anything you're reading in the paper is true. We can get debt at three percent, you know, and laugh by three and a half percent on thirty-year paper right now. And, uh, but I'd have to finance the other fifty percent equity. And that charge, that cost, our cost of equity is about ten percent. And so the way we're set up in Pierce, South Dakota is, is that, uh, you know, a hundred million dollar project, I would have costs somewhere around, all-in cost, right at seven percent, give or take. Um, so what you'll see on here is where it makes a little more sense, is if we did it in a nonprofit model and not through the regulatory model. There's, uh, financing out there, you know, by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and things like that, that we can lever the entire project. So in this example, a hundred million dollars, we went to the USDA and said, well, if we did, well, something through your guaranteed cost, you know, your, your guarantee program. You know, what's approximately the cost of debt on that? And so it's balanced around a little bit, uh, from time to time, but, you know, it looks like it averages about five point two five percent. And so if you go to that first bullet point there on that revenue requirement, the principal interest on five point two five percent is about six point eight million dollars. You know, and then the total cost on the whole project, you know, you want to have enough revenue to cover, you know, the cost of the project. You'd need nine point seven million dollars, or you don't know if you can kind of put your cursor over that nine point six five, uh, that nine point six nine five number there. But if you look at that number, you know, don't go back to slide, I just wanted you to highlight, you know, this. Halfway through the page, there's something called the total revenue requirement of just under ten million dollars. Well, that's six point eight million dollars if you lever the whole, the entire project. And what I was getting at is if we did it in our regulated model, that cost would be about two million dollars higher. And so, you know, it would raise the cost of this project, but, you know, from about ten million dollars to be about twelve million dollars a year. And the bottom part is we went through some, some rates that we think would be pretty, you know, standard with some of the graphs that, that Reid just showed you. Um, you know, we think, you know, people are accustomed to a propane tank. And so if the, if the, if the, uh, if the nonprofit entity, we charge fourteen bucks, you know, for a meter charge. And then charge eighty-five cents per therm for delivery and forty cents per therm for the average supply cost. You know, we're getting to there's a dollar twenty-five therm delivered right to your house. And that equates to about a dollar fourteen per gallon propane. And so, you know, what we're getting at there is the prior chart that Reid had up there. Propane's average more than that over either, no matter how you look at it, a five-year period, a ten-year period, or a twenty-year period, so it's been higher than that. That doesn't mean it will always be higher than that in the future. But if you just ran these, less than propane, and that bottom bullet down there, you can see this would create revenue of about ten million dollars. The ten million dollars at the bottom covers that nine point seven million dollars of costs up top. And so that's how kind of all this works. And so if you're wondering, well, you know, why the nonprofit model? If you change that middle cost from nine point seven, you know, to be almost twelve million dollars. Okay, your cursor's right on that, Reid, if you just move that around right there. Um, on your computer. So the nine point seven million bucks would be like twelve million dollars. And then if you went to that bottom, you'd have to charge rates that wouldn't make sense for people to, to convert from propane over to natural gas. And so the high-level business case is, you know, the best way to do this is go get government funds, leverage the whole thing. And now this project becomes viable, whereas it wouldn't be viable in our regulated, uh, in our regulated model. So I guess with that, I'll just stop and take questions before I go to page seven. But that's the high level of why we're thinking nonprofit, not for us to do regulatory. And I know I threw a lot at you there, but you'll be thinking it's competitive with propane at these prices. And it kind of works under this, under this financial model.
I guess we've had some discussions on this, but, you know, in order to make something like this viable, I guess you need a number of, you know, towns potentially buying in. And the first step would be, you know, forming the nonprofit with a nonprofit board with representatives of each of the communities that would be involved in this. And then finding some money, uh, potentially to do a feasibility study. Because a feasibility study would be required in order to be able to even have a chance of getting the financing. Is that correct?
Yeah, but you're thinking about that exactly right. Um, so it was our line, I think you could come and talk to the towns to see, you know, if you guys, it feels like the next step would be if there's enough interest, just form the nonprofit. Um, we, then that group can look into whether, you know, they want to move forward with feasibility tests, like, you know, Reid has talked. I know the other groups, I don't want to be talking to this group, but I guess hopefully just say this, of course Reid's a politician, he can speak himself. But, you know, there have been a number of meetings over the last couple of years. Well, one of those meetings is with the EDA. And there are some potential funds that would pay for these feasibility studies. And I use the term potential, right? Because we've just had an election, things moved around, you're never sure what you're going to get. But, you know, but if the group was formed, it could look into what would it cost for a feasibility study? Then see if there's funds out there and then you can make a decision to move forward with it if you like to be saw. If you didn't, you know, just don't spend the money and kind of no harm, no foul. And kind of go through those steps like that. Do the feasibility study. If the feasibility, you know, if there's money for the feasibility study or the group, you know, wants to move forward with it, go ahead and do it. If that study says, hey, you know, this makes some sense, and then you submit that to the USDA and we can certainly help with all that kind of stuff. Um, and the USDA says, yeah, we'll fund this, you know, well, now you got the funding to start the project and then you can go with it. So I think it's kind of baby steps. And the first baby step would be see if there's enough interest to even form the nonprofit to go through and kind of look at these things that, you know, we're trying to tell you in fifteen minutes, which is kind of unfair to you guys. But, you know, we think over the last couple of years, where it has a shot to do this. Um, you know, this page right here that Reid just went to is, you know, when we ran these numbers through the model, you know, that, that annual usage is what we typically see with a typical house on the left-hand side of the page, now the red side, typical residential customer. That's a typical house. Reid talked about the conversion, you know, propane tends to take ten percent more in BTUs to get to a therm. And so if eight hundred therms is an average house, you know, that's about eight hundred and ninety, eight hundred and seventy-four gallons of propane. If you kind of do all the stuff we talked about in a couple, a couple of prior pages, you know, under natural gas, that cost for the, you know, is, uh, you know, a thousand sixty-eight for the year. You know, propane would be fourteen hundred, you'd save, you know, two hundred and some dollars a year by doing that. You know, we ran through a couple of studies and looked at some things and, you know, the average cost of conversion in the house. And they could very greatly, like some houses might be able to just convert because they have ductwork already, some might not. But if the average conversion is eight hundred bucks, um, you know, that payback's three point four four years. And so, you know, anyone wanting to convert over would need to see a pretty quick payback. You know, I'm just using about, so anywhere three to, three to five to six years makes some sense, you know, if that payback is, you know, fifteen years for somebody, they might look at it and say, well, that's not worth it to me. So and a lot of our assumptions, we assume a sixty percent conversion rate from people walking propane over to, uh, over to natural gas. And Reid hasn't had the chance to talk about his history and, you know, go through all that in the company. But Reid did do a, you know, a kind of a project like this a little more than twenty years ago in the nineteen nineties. And that sixty percent is about what he found during these towns over time. So we don't think we're all wet with the sixty percent. Um, the right-hand side, which, you know, I don't know how it depicts on yours, you know, our cameras are over the top of mine. But that right-hand side's a typical commercial customer. Typical commercial customer gets a little bit more savings, you know, that eight hundred and seventy-three, I think that number is behind there. Um, you know, so, but that pay, but they typically, a commercial customer usually have higher costs in conversion too. But, so we were seeing that three to five-year payback on both sides. So, you know, we think this project, you know, could have some legs. And, uh, that's kind of why we're here talking to you and those are the numbers we can kind of see. You know, Reid, I guess.
Could you, could you name the other communities that you're potentially looking at together with Sisypheans? So we've got an idea of the scope and area that you're looking at here.
Yeah. We're here again, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I did, took the slides out of order a little bit. So it does seem like we're jumping around, but trying to respect your time. But the founding members of the, the communities we're looking at, maybe just give you a little breadth of the size of the project as a reminder. Where actually, we looked at eighty-nine communities, uh, which has a population about thirty-five thousand. Population doesn't necessarily constitute running services, households does. In those eighty-nine communities, we had, we have from the census data roughly about fourteen thousand, just over fourteen thousand, uh, households. And as Dan stated in my past, when we've done gas conversion in the early nineties. Typically of your residents, you'll have about twelve percent of the households would equate to small commercial type businesses. So that's roughly seventeen hundred potential commercial customers. Break that down, as Dan said, the sixty percent is a very good number to use from what we found. That's about eighty-five hundred households that you could anticipate connecting across the eighty-nine communities. And roughly about eleven hundred, I think that mass out thousand to eleven hundred, small commercial, small commercial type businesses. When we looked at those eighty-nine communities, there's a very distinct line of the larger communities. And when I say larger, I'm going to say probably populations north of a thousand, households north of four hundred or four hundred and fifty. And that's Chamberlain, Wagner, Miller, Sisson, Britton, Platte, Westington Springs, and Tindall. Um, and so we have, uh, figuring those are the larger, actually these eight communities make up about sixty-six percent of the project. Uh, just, just by customer count, uh, for it. Um, so our thought process was if this is going to move forward, those major communities are going to want to stay in what's happening. So our suggestion is that these would be the founding members of this nonprofit association. Again, just a little bit on the nonprofit, what we were targeting, I think when it came out, we talked, used the term pull-up, uh, when we were out. You can use that kind of as a thought process. That's how electricity got across the country. It's that same type of mentality, is how do you bring people together, customers together, to share in the cost, to make it happen? How do you socialize and rate them? Um, and, you know, right away, some people want to point to that it looks like, you know, they're right at the takeoff. And they should pay less than somebody at the end of the line. I want to squelch all that. The only way a project like this is going to work is if everybody shares in the risk and the reward, if you will. Otherwise, it's not going to go, um, so it, it has to be viewed as a whole project for it. Um, Dan already jumped to, based on the finances, it's about a hundred million dollar project at a high-level estimate. We're, we're saying, putting ourselves out there, we'd really like to use the subject matter experts, uh, within Northwestern to help this happen in the state. I think that'd be pretty cool if South Dakota got further out into the territories with natural gas and other states. Um, so if we can take advantage of that, it would be by an agreement if the nonprofit wanted to go after somebody else to operate the business. But that annual estimated operating and maintenance cost is about two point four million. Um, and obviously, one of the big things that we see on this is, uh, this would give our smaller rural communities the opportunity to help attract business, hopefully grow. Have another competitive energy source alternative, uh, to use, uh, with it. And, uh, so the mayor was kind of alluding to some of the next steps, uh, from, from our previous meetings as well as Dan. Um, but as we see it, if, if the founding members, and actually on the meeting we had December eighth, uh, the communities, uh, the eight communities sat in on. We talked about, let's, let's put a line in the sand, let's, let's pick a date, uh, to try to maybe make that next step, otherwise it's going to go nowhere. So how do we form that nonprofit entity? By signing a joint powers agreement, putting together all of the, the, uh, the, the authority, ordinance resolution, organize the meetings. And, you know, establish the entity so it, the board can start making decisions. And we said we'd like to have that done by the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, so by the end of March, basically. Um, Dan alluded to, we, through our discussions, through all of the meetings we've had, we came across EDA Economic Development Association. Um, when the state flooded, you know, all the one county was declared a disaster area, they came into huge dollars. I wish the project would have been ready. He was kind of knocking on our door to, to see if some of those funds could be utilized for a project like this. His budgets came down a little bit, but he still believes a pro, program such as this, those funds. His budgets came down a little bit, but he still believes a pro- program such as this, those funds are meant for infrastructure, um, building out infrastructure. So he still believes that there could be, um, an opportunity to apply for that grant. And I believe it's an eighty, twenty split on the grant. So eighty percent of the funds could come from a grant to do the feasibility study possibly. And if, as Dan said, that goes somewhere, we shared on this slide, some of the costs we visited with USDA that could be associated with the, the feasibility study that would need to happen. Um, but if, if we were to get the grant, get the feasibility study, it came back that, that you'd apply for the USDA program, um, which is being targeted as a guaranteed fund. Um, and that would involve state, I'm going to call them local banks. Uh, we've had an opportunity to visit with a number of them, um, that have a major interest in assisting with an in-state program such as this. Um, and I won't go into the details of a lead lender and how it all worked, but, uh, just know that that would give a guarantee, a federal guarantee behind that loan, that's why they're interested. Um, and then, you know, ultimately, uh, Northwestern would like to help this happen by being the turnkey, uh, general contractor, uh, to get the project up and running and then a long-term contract. We have thrown a lot of information at you, um, and the main thing that, that I'd like to offer is, uh, I don't know what I did there. Um, is we need to definitely be willing to come out and visit with the community. Um, last week, Wednesday, we, uh, Westington Springs had posted it in the paper, generate interest among their citizens and asked that Dan and I come out and do a presentation to educate them so that they would be educated in the community in order to move forward, make a decision on what the desire of the community is to move forward. We'll put that offer out there for you guys as well. Um, I see how you have your group set up. I, I appreciate the safety protocols that you've got, um, but Dan and I are new willing to do that with that. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
One, one other thing before we go to that, you know, Mayor, if you were on that, if you were on that December eighth call, you know, we, we also, uh, offered up Todd Meyer Henry's, a lawyer that has kind of done this, um, you know, with water districts and things like that in the past. And so if you have questions, we could certainly offer him up too to see, you know, why are you doing this? And, uh, Reed, just letting you know what you're presenting, so whatever, whatever you click on, we all get to see. But anyway, we can, we can offer up Todd Meyer Henry as an independent source who can kind of represent you guys. Uh, you know, let you know how he views it and how he sees it. Um, and then, uh, and then there's other communities that, you know, Reed's been talking to, you know, Chamberlain. Some of those are a little bit ahead of the other ones on how they're thinking about it. So I would think, you know, we could offer that up with Reed, you know, but talk to our, who else we're talking to. So please, you know, kind of kick that around and, um, you can do that for yourselves.
Yeah, we, uh, we did, I think Todd did forward some of the information about location documents for, you know, the, uh, what our community would have to do in the joint powers agreement. I did forward that to our city attorney who's had reviewed some of that information. So we're, we're familiar with that. I guess, is there any quick questions here before we move on to the rest of the agenda? Or comments we can discuss later, those next steps we want to take. But do we have any quick questions while we have? I guess maybe one is, what has the response been so far from the other communities where you presented? Have you gotten any inkling there?
Yeah, um, it's, it's been, I'm going to say all over the board. I know there's a lot of good discussion going on. Um, I know one community, uh, in their conversation, it was an understanding from the December eighth meeting that there's, there's not a lot of obligation to take that first step to join, to learn more. Um, they were more than willing or advising, they really like to do that step forward. Um, other communities are, it, it seems like, uh, it's that unknown. So there's a little hesitation, um, with it. So it's a little bit all over the board, uh, on where they're at, and other communities that they're in, um, so.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for spending time with us this evening. Uh, just kind of introduce this concept to probably more people in our community. And we'll have some more discussions and, uh, see what our next steps will be have in the community, uh, to participate.
Okay, Mayor, you have my contact information.
Yes.
If anybody thinks of a question after the fact, please pass it on. I'll, I'll do my best to answer or get you an answer if it'll help you guys think through it, whatever it takes or whatever you need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time tonight.
Yep. Okay, Lori Mullen, are you on any tight schedule this evening?
No. This is interesting.
You'll get the full load of the city council meeting today.
Whether you like it or not.
Mark, thank you for staying here, getting the full load too.
It's all good.
Okay, we have with us, uh, our engineers to discuss, uh, the upcoming projects that the city is potentially looking at. You may recall at one of our previous meetings, we prioritized capital improvements that we would like to make as a city. And I guess the number one on that list was painting our water storage facilities here this year. And then potentially tackling a drainage channel extension on Highway 10. And, and then also to start the process of potentially replacing our water treatment plant. So I see we've got Leaf here and you're a little distance away there. So why don't you just introduce yourself on the floor as yours?
Here's.
We can hear you.
Got Leaf and Bob Badgar.
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've got some, like, professional service contracts to, to look at here. But before we get into that, maybe if you can just kind of explain, you know, how you're going to go about this? What's first on your list and what, what you're recommending for the city?
Okay. Yep, you want to start first with, uh, water storage dates?
Yes, please.
So, um, this agreement that's in front of council tonight is, is what I'm agreeing, uh, council and health's wishes to complete a water storage project. And with the design, you know, bidding, construction services. Two, sandblasts, touch-ups, um, there's a different, um, grading on the coating that's there. So some, some of the tower will get a full sandblast, some of them will get spot repairs. But it's to bring them up to, if you like new condition, re-coat them, the maintenance type of project that, you know, it can be every ten to twenty years. And I don't, I, I don't have any record of last time we've re-coated, so it's been a while.
I guess the agreement that we would enter into here, uh, as I understand it, uh, it would be for the design and development preparation and also for the bid negotiations. The total cost to the city would be enough to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, is that correct? Could you maybe review that?
Yes.
Yes, correct. So for the, the design and bidding services, um, you know, as shown on page two is, is twenty-five thousand. And then construction engineering and administration services, um, that's done at an hourly rate, you know, and it's just a, a typical, you know, um, construction period, estimate construction period to complete the project. And so if the contractor takes longer for whatever reason, then, you know, we can reverse additional time we might have. If the contractor gets done sooner, then you have less contract.
So the total cost then as far as engineering would be the initial twenty-five thousand and then, uh, an additional twenty thousand for the administration?
The additional twenty thousand for the construction administration would just be hourly rate. So if the contractor gets in there and knocks it out, then we would expect to be less than that. So it's just out, the last part would be just whatever it actually takes, the last twenty thousand be hourly rate, so.
What is your sense of how many potential contractors would be interested in this type of project out there right now?
A lot depends on, on scheduling, um, but there's three or four that have worked in, for the complete coating projects throughout northeast South Dakota and, you know, western South Dakota. They travel pretty far distances, that type of work does. And so, you know, we expect quite a few, it'll depend on what they have, where their working workload and how it fits into the schedule and how much flexibility to give to complete the project too. And obviously we don't want to, you know, give too much time, we want it done. But if we put too many constraints on it, we'll probably eliminate some bidders and get the driver cost up. So we'll keep that in mind when looking at the design process and setting of aims for completed work.
And we'll call, we'll call three or four of the ones that we see typically and try to do everything we can to make sure that we get at least two to three bids on this.
Okay, are there other questions before we proceed for action on entering into the letter of agreement on the water storage painting project? We'll handle each of these separately. Any other questions? Okay, is our motion then to proceed with entering into a, um, contract agreement for the water treatment or for the water, um, storage facilities resurfacing with health's engineering? And also to authorize the, the bidding? Or the motion, motion by Stapleton? Is there a second by White Liker? Discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicating for saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Let's move on to the south drainage channel improvements that kind of explained that. I think that's going to involve potentially some legal work and that we probably need some easements for access there. I think we talked about that at a, at a, a previous meeting, but go ahead and discuss that one as well.
Yep, so this project's scope is to extend the, the concrete channel that kind of runs along Betman Avenue. Betman's Avenue extends under the new bridge there on Highway 10. And, and this project would extend the concrete channel approximately two hundred feet. Um, it gets pretty, um, there's some escars and a lot of undergrowth and trees further back you get. But that first, first two hundred feet is pretty straight section, it's pretty sedimented in. And that'll continue to happen over time. So, so this type of a channel is, is, it gives the, it gives the, um, street department the ability to efficiently maintain that and improve drainage and that's kind of the goal of the project is to clean that area up and, and clean up the sides, little dress it up. And you can give them a spot where, when that, when we start to see sediment settling out, that we can, we can actually clean it up and give us a hard, a hard bed or hard, um, stream bottom essentially to clean up against. And, you know, kind of discussed, um, the, there is some, you know, some permitting requirements that, that will need to be replaced and easements that will need to be done. So there's, there's really like three phases to the engineering contract. There's, you know, the final designs, um, the construction documents for bidding purposes of ten thousand. There's the bidding and negotiation services of, of five. And then construction engineering, um, similar to water tower, that's at an hourly rate. And then administration permitting and legal services, um, which the water tower didn't have, is at an hourly also and that's estimated at seventy-five hundred. So we'll, we'll solicit, you know, all the, the stakeholders on the environmental side, get their feedback and input. And, you know, it's our, our assumption today that we're going to be required to do some permits for, to complete the project. And so that's how that cost is for. But it, it will really depend on those environmental agencies and what they require, so that's why that's at hourly rate.
Okay, are there questions on that project? The question would be is if we want to authorize the bidding on that project to proceed? Or if we just want to go forward with, uh, the design, development, that type of thing, uh, on that? I guess that would be the question as to how far we go in the steps that we take with that at this meeting. So any discussion or input from the council on that? Do you have any preliminary estimate as to what the cost, you know, might be of that from any previous work that you've done?
Yes, yes, we do. Um, construction total is estimated at, um, around a hundred thousand, a hundred and four thousand, um, plus engineering services.
So your engineering services as a percentage of the total project, they're going to be probably a little higher than this one, isn't it?
Yep.
Yep. And a lot of it depends on, if you're looking at percentages, on what we have to do for permitting.
Yeah. And that's why I'd like to, the first two, um, design and bidding, you know, that's, that, the percentage is a little higher, but, you know, that's the, the case. As the project gets smaller, that percentage starts to increase. A lot of the work still has to be done regarding this, you know, like at a hundred thousand, you know, a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred, three thousand, excuse me. We have to put the bidding documents together, it's got to be advertised and local papers, all that work has to be done. You know, whether it's a five hundred thousand project or a hundred thousand project. So that's where some of those costs make that percentage seem a little higher.
Thing is, if we as a council decide we want to proceed with that, I think the sooner we can solicit bids, probably the better. You know, as contractors work, I think we're going to get more competitive bids, so I think we need to keep that in mind as well too. So input from the council on that, what should we, what should we look at doing with that extension project?
This one would be a benefit of what? What's this one doing by extending that?
See, we're, we're going to have better flow of water through the concrete drainage way and we won't get a buildup of sediment underneath the bridge. In the past, the way it was designed, and even with the new design, I think we're still getting some sediment built up just because of the restriction on the south side of, of the Highway 10 bridge, is that correctly?
Correct, correct. The, the issues of the past was, you know, prior to this project, was the, the street, street department had a really difficult time cleaning out under that bridge to, to maintain the flow through your guys' channel. And they had a hard time getting the DOT to get out there to maintain it. So then they were forced to do it at times, it was really difficult, it was handwork. And what we'd rather prefer is, if, you know, we know that when the water slows down, it's going to settle out and the sediment has to get carried away with the stormwater. We wanted, we want to settle out in an open area where they can access it with a skid steer or equipment, you know, where they don't have to crawl into a, a little bridge to take care of the issue.
I would say that I think we should just keep moving forward with that project. I was saying I think we should keep moving forward and just go to get the rest of this project.
Is that a motion then by Sober then to, uh, enter into a contractual agreement with Hells Associates to do the extension of the drainage and authorize, uh, bids on that project? Motion by Sober, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Stapleton. Discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Now the, now the big gorilla, the water treatment plant.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone on the council is kind of, um, somewhat familiar, um, with the water treatment plant that City of Sisson operates for the drinking water system. And, you know, we've completed a study in the past to kind of review the alternates on, you know, you know, what the options are for the city and the recommendation out of that, um, And the recommendation out of that, um, facility plan or planning engineering report was to replace the existing water treatment plant that was built in 1980 and, uh, with a new facility. And this is the, this engineering agreement would be to construct, design and construct this new facility.
One of the things we want to make sure we note on, on this is, uh, there's a study then, how many years ago? Me? Probably more than that.
And maybe, yeah, sure, for you.
By that four or five years ago, the study was done, and there was a note in the folder from Terry Helms, who was still here when that was, was done, that he had told you he would give you half the cost of the study back if you moved forward with this project. So I want to make sure that everyone's aware that, uh, we are deducting half the cost of that study as part of the design, uh, because there was some of that that could be utilized, so.
So I guess the next step, I think this is one of those that we're probably not ready to look at any type of bid authorization yet, but we need to really do probably authorize you folks, if we're serious about it, to put together, you know, a design. Uh, so that we've got at least maybe potentially a cost estimate, and we've got a general idea of what it's going to cost based on your most current information available on the design. And then also, at the same time, explore potentially some alternate financing sources for it, or sources of financing. So I think that's the elements that we're looking at here, isn't it, folks?
Yeah.
Yep. And this, and this agreement really reflects our design team, you know, we're one piece of the puzzle. But in our, we, you know, we have an architect that will utilize electrical engineers, control engineers, um, you know, structural engineers, mechanical, you know, so those are all part of that. And that's all reflected in this agreement. It'll be one agreement between the City of Sistatin and Helms Associates, and we'd be the lead designer on this project.
We are intentionally doing that with the control too, because we don't want somebody that's not used to your SCADA or not already working on your SCADA, uh, getting involved, and then you can't use the same, the same people and have the continuity. So, uh, we really wanted to bring them in with us on this so that everything is seamless for you folks on that SCADA too.
Yeah. And that, that's kind of reflected, you know, on the control side, you know, I don't want to get too much in the weeds here, but the controls, you know, there's, there's two options that, and on smaller projects or projects of smaller scope, um, we'll, we'll put some of that control side to the, the bidders themselves. But the tie-in, your existing map for SCADA system and complete all the control work for a new water treatment plant, you know, we want that design done before we bid. So we haven't, you know, we're not, we're not dependent on the lowest cost, you know, the cheapest contractor that's going to, you know, might bring us out at the lowest cost, but, you know, we want the durability and integrity of a, of a design system on, on our end. So, you know, we're in control of that portion of it versus, versus, uh, putting it on in more like a performance specification where we, we tell them what we want, and then they do the, they do the design as part of their contracted work. You know, we're doing the design upfront, um, with the control side, and so that, that's reflected in that cost too. So, you know, and so we would expect to see some savings on the construction side because we're not putting it on the contractor, we're completing that on the design page.
Well, this one, if we take action as a council tonight, it would be for the design and land development phase. Uh, we looked at taking that step and basically entering into the agreement that if we, you know, take it beyond that, the agreement does spell out, you know, the costs of the bidding and negotiation to the city with Helms. And also for the, uh, the project, I think, looking at the construction phase as well, the engineering. So if you add up all the fees in there, we're totaling pretty close to $500,000, potentially in engineering fees on this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Correct, and then the same thing for the construction phase, that's, that's at an hourly rate. So it depends, you know, that's 100% dependent on the contractor that we get, you know, when we have to bid out projects, you know, we can't necessarily choose, it's the lowest responsive contractor. Not, not that we'll see different quality work, but some contractors move faster and some contractors move slower.
Yeah, there are, as you get into this, there are going to be things in the design where you may make choices that are going to save you money with, um, I think LEAP has this set up for, uh, we can handle the, what I would say, the higher quality, higher cost. We have done the structure itself.
Yep.
And we can take care of pre-stress, uh, pre-cast.
Pre-cast.
Pre-cast concrete, um, panel, uh, and if you decide not to go with the pre-cast concrete panels, then with the architect and our fees, you're going to see a reduction of about 24, almost 25,000 dollars in deduct on our fees. Uh, but this really covers, uh, until we get into it and see what costs are really going to be in design, and you make those choices. This covers what we feel is about the worst-case scenario as far as, uh, cost for you folks. If anything, we think you can make choices that, if you want to, you can make this go down in cost, so.
Yeah, so just to get a little more background on that, as far as, you know, hypothetically, if the council so approves the agreement, you know, we would have maybe, you know, 5% milestone where we get some, some, we get the team together, we develop some, some little harder costs. And where we're, we're at trying to make decisions, and then we would meet with, whether it's the, you know, water committee, with council as a whole, and do a discussion on, on, you know, the project costs, where potentially savings, whether it's in the structure design itself, whether it's a pre-engineering metal building or pre-cast walls, and whether it's a prepackaged plant or those type of things.
Location on the land.
Location on the land, you know, there was some discussion, um, you know, that the challenging site to build to the east, you know, so, you know, it's been discussed before, if, if the property is available to, to the north, and that option's pursued, we'd, we'd see some savings on construction, just initially looking at it, you know, there's like 100,000 to 200,000 dollar add just to use that slope versus using the land to the north, you know, so there are savings in that. And so all those type of things, we, we would have discussions with the city to narrow that cost down, to narrow the design down. And there's milestones that we would hit with the city during this process. It wouldn't be, you know, track, we disappear for, you know, nine months of design and come back and say, here you go, this is what, this is what you can bid, you know. We'll work for you, we'll work with you to make sure the product is what you guys want, and we'll serve the community of Sistatin very well for a long time.
Any questions for the engineers and/or action by the council on entering into an agreement with Helms for professional services on the water treatment plant improvements? Thoughts? Action?
That's one question.
Go ahead.
How long would a project, are we looking at? How long would a project?
Did you hear the question, uh, how long, I think it's spelled out, isn't it about?
Yeah, we heard you.
Okay.
So for design, you know, so hypothetically, if you gave the green light today, I would expect sometime next fall, um, to maybe, you would potentially be looking at bidding a project such as this. As far as construction goes, I would consider 12 months. And, and a lot of it might end up depending on, and, you know, hopefully, the hope is that the COVID delays don't continue when it comes to construction, but, you know, there's a lot of equipment, a lot of parts that go into water treatment plant, and there's a lot of lead times that have tripled or doubled or quadrupled, depending on what you're looking for, for that type of stuff. So that might be part of that control too, but, you know, I would say nine months design, you know, to fit into all, all the design team schedules, of course, for existing workload, and then 12 months for construction. So you would be looking at, you said today?
Design 21, construct 22.
Yep.
Any thoughts as to, I know in general, building costs, there's been a spike with COVID in general, you know, building materials have gone up considerably. Uh, do you have any predictions or any insight as to, you know, what costs of materials may trend as we go forward into the next year or two?
Yeah, there has been, you know, I haven't had that much feedback from architects on some of the products we've worked on with them as far as, you know, it's kind of, everyone's kind of aware, construction costs have been going up. You know, in the written estimate we discussed, um, that was, that was, that was the CIP meeting, you know, I had an estimated building cost of around a million. Um, the architect, you know, confirmed that number for, um, pre-engineering metal building, and it depends on the site, you know, if we use that existing, uh, the east of the existing water treatment plant, a property the city currently owns, there's, you know, there's a, I think it's a 20% add to that cost. And then if you do pre-cast, um, structure, you know, there's, I think they had maybe as much as 300,000 more, just use pre-cast panels. So, you know, there's definitely a more significant cost to utilizing pre-cast, you know, based on our deck estimate today. It could be, you know, some rough numbers, you know, who, uh, will may, will may enter a preliminary discussion with them on selecting our design team.
And I think those are things that, you know, LEAP alluded to earlier, as we get into the design, I guess, we're going to want to sit down with you folks and the architect and treat it as a team and try to figure out, you know, what is the best bang for the buck? Because if, if the, the wood and the steel products are, are continuing to go up at 20, 25, 30%, and we can get some pre-cast, and they're going to be much lower maintenance over life and last one, then, you know, those things become more viable. So those are things that we're just going to have to work with you along the way to nail down.
Yeah, if this one lasted nearly 50 years, we want to try to make the next one last twice as long if we can.
Yeah.
Yes, any action by the council as to the next step here? Want to enter into the agreement at this point, start the first phase there, which would be the design phase? Go ahead.
Have you guys talked to BDM and see if they can supply you with water?
Yes, a long time ago. They don't have the capacity to do that.
Yeah, I remember that conversation, Terry, and I think the way it ended up, they were, they were looking, they even brought up that maybe Sistatin could sell BDM waters.
And that's the BDM part of it, if we expand our water treatment plant, it's the opposite, they would have interest in potentially purchasing some water from the City of Sistatin. They just do not have the main flying capacity to serve our community.
Oh, I would talk to them again. There's a new manager. We have a hydraulic study, so they will know if they can do it or not.
And it wasn't, it wasn't just the feasibility for them to supply it, and even if they expanded their transmission lines and their water treatment plants to serve, it, it was also, you know, the cost, you know, so unless their rates are going down, you know, there was a, still a pretty significant gap for the end-user costs, you know, for the citizens or the people that are using it, there was, there was quite a big gap, you know, with City of Sistatin's charging per thousand or 5,000 gallon versus what BDM charges.
Yeah, but them prices are going to go up if they build a new water treatment plant. Correct?
Well, we've, we've studied this, Kevin, and we'll rely on our engineers here, but that's a consideration that we've already taken into account. And our goal, our goal as a city is to provide dependable water at the lowest cost as we possibly can. Right now, our in-town rates are about a third of what BDM rates are. Our out-of-town rates are approximately equal to what BDM rates are. So we've got a lot of room as far as if we have to increase our rates any at all because of this plan in order to get back up to the level of, you know, where BDM rates potentially would be.
And you're going to have to.
Well, we're, we're looking at multiple funding sources here, you know, for this. You know, we have some ability to put some cash in it as a city itself, we've got some ability to look at borrowing some funds, and we're going to be exploring participation with some other potential federal sources of funds for this, so.
I guess even their design, they're going to look at those anyways, the cost differences, you know, when they do their design.
Yeah, we, we certainly can revisit the issue too, no, no, you know, no question, especially if, if we start to see, you know, if we're at that 5, 10% page, you know, we worked with the City of Sistatin for a long time, you know, we're, we want to do what's best for the city, we work for the city, you know, that's our end goal here, it's, it's not to do a one-time project, it, I mean, not at all, you know, not by any means. We want to do what's best for the city.
Well, I see there's some hesitancy from the council to look at taking action on this tonight, we might have to delay this one until, uh, next meeting, so the council has a little more time to think about it, and maybe we get some of these questions answered, but I believe I know what the answers are going to be, but we'll revisit some of these things that were brought up.
Yeah, do you want us, Terry, do you want us to touch again?
Pardon me?
Do you want us to touch base with BDM again?
Yes, please.
Okay, we will do that.
Well, can they do that as part of their design process and then that way to go forward?
I didn't hear the question, Laura.
I was just wondering if they could do that as part of their design process and you can move forward tonight yet, because another month is another construction month. But.
Well, this one, this project isn't as pressing as the others because we're not looking at bidding it now anyway until later in the year. So I think delaying a month isn't going to affect this project that much. Am I safe in making that assumption?
Yeah, you're correct.
Yep, and if we were to go with BDM, you know, it would be a different type of contract to bring them online and switch that over, you know, a different scope altogether, so we wouldn't want to sign a contract and then come to find out that BDM is more feasible, you know, to then go back to our subcontractor, our design team, and tell them, no, it's not going to go. We'd rather, you know, cross this off the list beforehand, or make sure, you know, which option is more viable, revisit it.
Kevin is a board member of BDM, I think that's why he has some interest in it too, so I'm, I'm aware of that, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, and so the public knows that we've explored that option, and, you know, we can actually, you know, prove to the public, you know, which is going to be the most cost-effective to the rate payers in our community, that's what we want to do.
And, and we'll look at all funding scenarios too, whether it's 100% loan and how that affects, and user rate, we'll revisit, revisit those tables and Excel spreadsheets and get some of those answers too.
Okay, uh, anything else, gentlemen, or does anybody from the council have any other questions? Okay, well, we'll probably visit with you again, uh, on our March meeting, either in person or via Zoom, whichever you prefer.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, next step for the sake of, uh, Myron, who's here, who's got one other item on the agenda, and that is looking at our shop buildings where the garbage trucks are located. I know at a previous meeting last year, we talked about replacing the steel on that building, it's in pretty tough shape in a lot of places. There are some repairs that need to be done with some of the, uh, uh, framework of that steel building once they take the steel off. And, uh, that project again as well, I think we've got maybe some local contractors that could potentially look at doing that work. Uh, what I recommend is that we replace the steel, and we potentially look at a wainscoting, which are the colors of steel, that if for some reason the steel is damaged on the bottom with a vehicle or something hitting it, we can replace those panels below, we don't have to replace everything like it is now, you know, so. I think we can work up, you know, some specifications, you know, for that. Lee, if you're willing to, you know, potentially get involved with that, uh, I think we've got enough expertise here to potentially, we'll go forward with that if the council's willing to authorize the bidding process, then we can get out there. So is there a motion to proceed with that?
Put the rain benders on there too?
Pardon me?
On the bed, put the rain benders on there too? Those are all out there and out now.
I don't know, do we need gutters?
It's pretty, it's a flat ground. We can, I, they were on dryers, but we really, one train, we found a train, a problem, and it's not.
Not very many are sore.
Yeah, it's not really, they're efficient, even in the weather. There's not, we don't got a ton of license, you know, nothing like that, so. I would say, I was like, what are the?
Hey, could that be a model?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we might pull it back, we'll drop it, and it'd be nice if we're, you know, it'd be nice if we did all, we're losing plenty, a lot of areas are damaged, can patch them up on the inside. It's our garbage truck, and we got a lot of equipment, our recycle van, boom truck, our, our spare garbage truck. We got a lot of equipment that we can, we can stay in our interior. Otherwise, well, and then we gotta eliminate spots where we'll, we'll be left on time, it's covered up.
So I guess the question would be, do we need any windows in that place though?
I mean, we, both the guys in the inner and the morning, we leave, that shop, we, we're not working in it. Say, you know, there, it's a vehicle park, and we're getting one, get the garbage truck, leave, they get active, well, it's light, we got through one window on the side. Otherwise, we don't need any windows, but it, it just tends to more be broken.
So the question then is the gutter part of it, you know, you're saying that drainage is not a problem, it is now?
No, I haven't had issues.
Do we have gutters on our big shop building there?
Yes, we gotta, we put seamless on there, which we gotta get fixed, but we got seamless covers on the front and on the back, on the new shop.
So maybe let's look at that as maybe a bid option, whether to put gutters on it? Replace the gutters, if that's acceptable to the council?
I think we need to acquire some headwind, so I can go, go watch you on the building, see what.
Okay, is there a motion then to authorize bids for the steel replacement?
Most of them.
Motion by Stapleton, is there a second, or maybe later?
Should we see what other work needs to be done before we authorize the bid?
Yeah, yeah, oh, but I think we can authorize the bid, but we'll provide the bid specs as part of it.
Okay.
I think we'll want to proceed with it, so if we've got open contract interest, you know, we can proceed with it. It's a long meeting in there.
Yeah. Sorry. Good thing you have a bounce.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
I didn't catch the second.
Herman got the second. Paul was the motion, Herman was the second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
All scheduled.
And you want to drop my, please also part of the ice cream, do you want?
Okay, let's do that, let's do that next step.
We did meet last Thursday, um, I think we all decided that this year would work for ice cream, February already. But I think we all agreed that, um, the soil is, is, is gonna be our biggest thing. Gary's not here, I don't know, Myron, if you wanna talk a little bit about cement clay?
With what rate we have now, it's 300,000 gallons per year to fill it and maintain it. So fill it, and of course go through, take up those spots, fill it again. What E damage before is about 300,000 gallons, so a lot of water decision, so. I guess prior to the year, he was telling me that when they did this, they talked about using a mennonite clay, which is beholden, they talked about putting it green. You shouldn't go, put a rock yet, I'm pretty surprised, even if you follow through with it. But we need to get how much of plays and costs, what, what we're looking at, getting involved then. Versus buying trucks or trying to plow the line or, or anything like that. Really, it's like stepping, we'll see what we have involved as far as getting plays, as far as the lighting in general, that stuff that's, they put some seasonal contract that, so we tell them, ought to double turn on, you know, start this month, end this month, just like our Christmas lights. We could charge a monthly rate on that, and we tell them it's done, and turn it on. So that's, that part's the easy part, you know, it's gonna be figured out, a ground part. We gotta figure a way to start, you know.
No, I just, just kind of all agreed that we should maybe get in touch with our engineers, which we just got offline, but we should have a question to make it stand. If the rest of the council thought that was feasible to involve our engineers.
We just wanna make sure we do it right.
Yeah, and we kinda wanna eliminate the hassle, let's go on the tar, and we wanna make, make it as many as free as we can for Myron and the city group. See what kind of interest we have, after we get, you know, all price on it, see what it's gonna cost, and we talked about maybe, doing some, having a group, do some fundraising, come up with some money on there, although it's just not all the city involved in, so.
Really what it amounts to is we've got the basic area there in Burns. It's a matter of putting a mennonite clay so that we don't get the seepage that we had before. Likewise, you know, we don't have the seepage, once it melts, the water's gonna stay there, so we don't wanna have mosquito nests. So we've gotta have the ability to drain the water once it's caused in the spring. So the major part of the design and the most expensive part of it is putting in the mennonite clay and putting in the drainage system.
And then, someone looked at, that night clay, there was only like some lines like that were a long ways away, so I don't know if it has to actually be mennonite, but some kind of clay.
Yeah.
That happened, we hauled it in, Myron said it wasn't anything, all that, but we'll say that we do.
No.
There is other local contractors that obviously break a lot of clay to some other clients, so it could probably be done by a local contractor.
Oh, you're not the best side, hell, they want a clay right underneath the black curb.
Way the foundation shit.
Why said they could come to go Myron?
So, the next steps would be involving engineers, what you're saying. I guess, you know, we can reach out to them and see how much initial work or suggestions we can get for, that grass or some of these other projects that we're doing, you're knowing that if we proceed, you know, that they'll be involved in some engineering in that as well. Reach out to them and see what, what they will do for us, I can do that.
Would it be feasible to, we got an engineer ready, that seems to be really reasonable, a little project like this, would maybe, you know, come to the task.
Yeah. I think we should be opposed to that, we might reach out to local engineers. I guess if you wanna do that, get his opinion on that. And then we'll discuss it again at the next meeting after we fight out a little bit more on engineering design. Is that okay?
Yeah.
A little about, uh, putting a fence around it.
With that, maybe just starting simple, I think there was some concern about the snowmobiles coming through there, Myron, can you just talk to that point? If you're prepared?
Good on you.
Like you're excited, you know, for, you know, skating at your home, you know, it's not monitored, if you don't have a fence to get it to go, being in a certain spot to be decided.
The issues you're gonna have with fences and indoor trees is that it can increase your maintenance costs by quite a bit, because you're gonna be mulling around fences, you're gonna be cleaning up after trees, and then the other thing is, you want the wind to blow that snow across and keep it as clean as possible, you don't wanna have snowbanks building up on there all the time. The fences, the trees can create a problem.
This seems like a great, keep fencing warm, more shopping, it's just less inviting.
Probably longer, put a few signs up there.
No, I, you provided us a handle, at least with some of the things that, some of my medications are.
Dr. Staub, you mentioned it one time, you know, skating rink up with all the oncoms there, you've heard this discussion.
We have, uh, plans to take the blacktop off. Especially on the half, south half of the, and we will have that, the top, which is summer, actually the spring. Cause it's, uh, it cannot be used the way it is anyway, it's broken up, it's only one layer of blacktop. We have soil tests done on the east side of the building from some other properties that we looked at previously. We have two sites of soil tests that go down about 40 feet. Might be an indication of what's kind of hurting there. So, it may expand to taking the blacktop further off the other north side, except by the fence there too. So. We have some thoughts about it, uh, we don't have any engineering done on it yet, other than the soil tests. And I don't know the difference between the clay, you said it down, the clay, we said it down, but a lot of the, people we've seen, this year, construction seems to be a very, a lack of any black clay. We have more of a tan colored clay than, uh, the, uh, prison church additions. I think there were other, building and basement that have gone in. Considering what's, what the types of soils are.
Okay, uh, next thing, is that, no, okay. The next thing is, uh, community rec center, I think Laurie, that's probably what you were here for this evening. Or do you have other members here? I think Brittany's on that as well.
Right, yeah, and, um, Dr. Staub, a little bit, he had a conversation too, but, just wanted to talk to the council about, uh, there's been a task force, or a small group of, uh, community members getting together, probably for over a year now, um, it doesn't seem that long, but we're pretty close to it. And, um, there's been a lot of concern about, um, the health and engagement of our community members, our youth, and even the positive atmosphere. So, um, looking at what would, what would be the need in the community? And, so then this fall, ended up doing a survey, had about 150 or more responses back. Um, what would that community center look like, um, or recreation center look like? And what kind of components they would like to see in that? And we have, you know, talked about different things, um, where, where do we go from here basically? We have a lot of data, we have a lot of, we have a lot of buildings in our community that could be multi-purpose to use some of the things. But, right now, we're, we're just at a point where, um, we looked at what the great things that are happening over at Oakdale. And then, yeah, we also see the Taco Building, we looked at, um, the other pieces might need new construction. What, what would it be? And we're at a point now where, um, looking for input from the city, you know, um, where can we work together? And, um, we talked a little bit this, tonight about feasibility and design. Because there are so many options, and, um, is it a nonprofit? Is it a for-profit? Is it city-run? Is it, how is it run? You know, and getting all those different options, and then where is it? What facilities are already in our communities that maybe we would have included? And looking at all the different design pieces for that, be in the recreation center. Some of the responses, um, membership costs, what would they be willing to pay for membership costs? What do they wanna see in a building? Also went to, um, why, what isn't here already? What are we missing? Why, what things do you want incorporated like times, I mean, 24 hours? How do you do that? Is it, uh, one where you have to have adult supervision with every child? Or is it more of a YMCA where the child comes and there is a supervisor based on an activity? Or is, so, looking for the city, how can we take all this information and bring something positive to the community? And I go back to, we just had a architect on the phone. Would that be an option, you know, where the city could go do that, or that, and say, what is, what is available, you know, what types of costs, what options are out there? You know, if it would be a pro bono? And then after that, we would have a plan in place that we do, here are two or three different design aspects for this community rec center, and then begin focusing on, maybe it's more to the community, what do you want? You know, is it phase one, phase two, and all the different components that might be in those different phases? Doing that, fundraising, or looking at, again, what partnerships would be willing to come to the table? Just, that's, I can give you a little bit of insight on some of the work that's been going on and discussion of that. And is the city wanting to do something like that?
Brittany and Dee, I think, are you involved in this too, Dee, you're on?
Oh, yeah.
Brittany, so Brittany I know is involved. Your perspective as a city council member and being a member of this committee?
I know that we, when we discussed kind of our, our improvement plan, maybe for the next five years, we had included a rec center on there. I'm not sure where we put that, I knew it was the year 22, 23. But, you know, just personal experience for me, I mean, my husband and I talked to a hoopla class for four years up at the school. And we had, um, people from high school to 60-year-olds heading to our class, um, you know. We usually had about 15, 15 people there every time that we did it. And I think that it's positive for our youth, I think that it promotes active and healthy, um, communities. It makes us more inclusive, so. I would like to see our community or the, the city involved at what capacity, I feel, I think that's where we're stuck.
Right, like, if we go by different recreations and, and I think we need to have some sort of, formulated ideas or design out there. I'll, I'll listen, one of the questions that were asked are, why are you and members of your household not able to participate in active recreation as often as you like? And the number one reason was lack of desired facilities. You know, the school is, is great, you know, they have confessional courts and, oh, we're bringing them up for, and we can't even use it. That was number four, that was number four programs not offered at community times.
I think I saw your survey too, and there was a price range of what people were willing to pay for do, could you share that?
Yes, um, we had 114 said that they would, uh, support at $35 to $50 a month. There were 18 that said 51 to 65, and then three at $66. There were eighteen that said fifty-one to sixty-five, and then three at sixty-six dollars or more. And that was for like samples. For families, they said seventy-seven would support sixty-five to ninety dollars per month. Twenty-nine said eighty-one to a hundred dollars per month. And then there was seventeen that said a hundred and one dollars or more.
So, and with that, I mean, we've, we've discussed having just a small recreation center that, you know, maybe has a group fitness studio and has a weight training room and maybe a track. And we've also discussed having a water park. So I mean, this isn't, we're kind of all over the place with it, but the community wants.
I think we would like to see a whole picture of all it. And the top five were indoor block, running track, fitness center, swimming facilities, basketball court, and a movie theater. And I know Dr. Staub at Talawha, they've had some conversations about that. Incorporating some of those ideas as well. So it would be, what part of that, you know, if you were to even pour out a lot of, you know, ideas in there, what would that look like? What would that cost be? And then start generating, okay, we can generate X amount of money between the phase one and then phase two. And we've gone back and forth at all the different buildings. I mean, even the Staveck building or on Main Street, is that a possibility? You have the Shaco building. Is that a possibility? And phase two would be expanding to the south in some of the industrial part area. So it's just trying to figure out what's, what's this. And in order to do that, we're at a point where we need to have that discussion with the architects and get some designs, layouts. And maybe they already have some ideas of, here is one that was built. We have looked at costs at Mill Lake. We also have some costs from the Smith Event Center that was just recently built. And not everything in there we need, but maybe a little more, something, but in that price range. So we get an idea of what it is, but, and then operating costs that have to go into that whole business platform.
So really, kind of what you're asking for, probably initially here, if the city's willing to participate in the cost of feasibility study for this, is that what your engineering request is?
Yes, yep.
Is there any type of matching funding available, you know, for that type of study? Source anywhere?
Well, I guess the question would be, if the city were to say we would match X amount, maybe you have to go back to the group and say, okay, now let's go to the school. Because there are other performance of this. Let's go to the hospitals and see if they would be willing, you know, to provide that. But until we get one to start to support it, it's just, well, and the city is on board than I am or one way or the other. So we haven't really looked at it. We listed some of the partners that we would go and work with, but it has to be.
What would the, do you have any idea what a cost would be of a feasibility study?
No, we did do, you know, conceptual community plan, which is what ISG has been looking at. But that's a, that's a whole bigger picture. This is a smaller piece of that picture. They were looking at forty-five thousand to do that community conceptual, which is a great thing to have. And I'll be a pro bono for that, but if we're just looking at the design and feasibility of a rec center, I don't know. Maybe again, the architect, if help would count, maybe, you know, you would say, you know, it will cost X amount of dollars. And for you, we'll get three, four.
I guess we, I'll maybe share some thoughts. You know, I've had some, you know, discussions with some of the committee members and that type of thing too. And I guess what I'd probably encourage you to do is to reach out to the communities that have these, you know, Brittany, Millbank, Water Town. All three of them have properly, Water Town became the most extensive. And that, I think they actually passed this on issue to help fund it. You know, I think the taxidermy, they're actually supporting that one. Millbanks basically was constructed by a major donation by Leo Flynn in that community a number of years ago. And I believe the actual operation has maybe struggled a little bit, and they're in the process of maybe getting the city involved in the actual running or management of that one. And then you've got the Brittany facility that has actually incorporated their city hall into, I believe, their, their building there. Because I think we, we attended a municipal meeting, basically, in that facility. And we had a chance to kind of take a look and see what it actually looked like. You know, they've got a stage in there, and they've got basketball courts, I think, and a walking path and that type of thing. And it borders their football field. But again, it's a smaller scale and it's in relatively close proximity to their water park. And also it's incorporated as part of that part of town. And I think the city's got some involvement in that to a certain extent, I don't know. But I kind of encourage you to research what those other towns are doing.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
And I, you know, I think, you know, with some of the major infrastructure things that we're doing here for the city residents to have their taxes be increased as a result of this, you know, that's, that's, that's not probably where you're going here with this, but that's going to be hard to sell.
No, we are not on that. And actually, the group feels strongly about doing that nonprofit. So, but there again, you know, until we figure out what the cost or the design of the project is, we can't decide who's going to have ownership on it. Because it is, so the Smith, which is very similar to Brit, was just shy of four million dollars. Eight point seven million dollars. And so we have those costs, but it has a huge performing arts center, which we would not need to have that. So those are things that, we have some costs of other projects and we're not, that's not what we're here for. What we're here for is just to say, is the city willing to help get the feasibility to understand what, what it looks like? Who would be involved? How would it be involved? And have that group or that tax board then have that conception of, okay, we can go forward now and do this. If, and I don't know where the city would even be a player in, then after that.
Okay. I guess I'll throw this out there then. Is there an appetite among the council to provide up to ten thousand dollars of matching funds for feasibility study? Motion by Silver, is there a second? I have one.
She's probably not.
Is there another second?
That would be a battery, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there have to be a battery in order for us to do the ten thousand dollars. You'd have to find other sources to match up to that same amount we would be doing. So if the whole cost would be twenty thousand dollars, the city would have ten, the other entities would have the other ten.
Lori, can I ask you what else the Smith have?
Pardon?
What else does the Smith have in your center?
They have a basketball court or an open area, which they use as a basketball court. They have a fitness center. They have like a, like a, you would be like a yoga room or other rooms, smaller room areas. They also have, it's an event center, so it's pretty large. They can have a large event or a smaller event in there. And I actually have the plans and I can share those if you wanted to look at those. She's given me permission to do that.
Good. I was just looking at what they got for that.
Right. And, you know, there again, you know, the community decided to invest in. And that's, you know, if that's what this is, really just to promote investing back into the community.
Any other discussion then before we vote on the motion? Joe got the second, we could get that. Any other discussion? Dr. Staub, you have a question?
I would just make an invitation to council and other interested parties to see what the Talawha has in it, available. How many have been in it in the last year?
And I think that, that needs to be part of this feasibility, because we know that there are, you know, it could be very well that that's where it goes, but.
Well, there's, there's some advantages to a building that survived eight years. And looks like it's to go another hundred years. The durability, the cleanability, and some of these things are part of that whole picture. And we're in the process of preparing for, hopefully coming this spring, to further insulate the building. Because that's our, you know, the nature of the building at one time was that the inhabitants of the building needed it. And all they needed really was ventilation. And now it's not the numbers using the building. But there's, the whole concept is spaces need to be flexible because things change. COVID changed a lot. So part of the building that we're working on now, that has groups for preschool and elementary kids, five different classrooms that we're working on. But those classrooms are going to have to have hand washing in each room. So on, just because of the nature of keeping things clean. So we're happy to have people come look at it. We're not heating the building this winter, other than the builds that we're working on. So sunny day is, is good.
And I think a couple of the task force members, they go up and took a tour of that. And that's what just made it spin over again. It's like now we're back again because some of the things that are happening in that school. Now we're doing that.
Well, we've got a motion and we've had a discussion. Any more discussion? Lack of the motion, that all is either aye?
Aye.
Hold on. Carrie. Do you have any questions? Assistant Attorney Chamber of Commerce?
Can you hold on just for a second? We have battery issues.
We have a funding request for the Assistant Chamber of Commerce, five thousand dollars. It's in our budget. And basically, it's for the banners for beautification or assembling, or helping participate in that project to replace the banners. And it was in our budget, and I've been asked the council to authorize that five thousand dollar payment to the chamber for that purpose. On the motion, by Silver, seconded by Allen, discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the agreement for engagement letter with Wallenburg and Richmond Company. Anna, maybe you want to redo that just a little bit with the council?
It's just a number of years to provide auditing services and assistance with the annual report for the years twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two. The costs are reported, they're.
Yeah, they're, they're looking, they do their audit, the audit, it's a three-year contract. The twenty-year audit is eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. It's a three-year, nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars for twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-two is twenty thousand. And then in addition, it provides the annual reports. Those are thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-twenty-three, three hundred for twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-two is thirty-five hundred. So it's a three-year agreement with a scale of fee schedule for each of the years in the agreement. Is there a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Wallenburg and Richmond for annual report audacity services for those three years?
Also.
Motion by Stapleton, seconded by Whitelife. Discussion. All in favor of the motion indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion on summer recreation program and/or summer events in the city of Sistin. Guess I want the council's input on that. I'm getting inquiries from different organizations that have annual events, you know, taking place. And we're kind of at the phase in the year where you start planning for those types of things. I guess my personal feelings is that as time goes on, we're going to get more vaccinations out there to the people that are most vulnerable. And I feel that we're probably, the way things are looking, by May, we should have all people that want vaccinations, that are sixty-five and older, vaccinated in our community. So I think we're going to have the majority of the people vaccinated by the time we start our summer events. Certainly not everybody will be. So that leads us, you know, the planning for summer rec program. Summer rec programs for the most part are outdoor programs. And they probably involve, you know, some of the younger kids and that type of thing. So I guess my personal feelings, I think we should probably plan on the summer rec program for twenty-twenty-one. Put that in line. I see a lot of heads shaking, yes, and probably. Okay, then when it comes to the events like, you know, the car show, celebrate Sistin, that type of thing, that are primarily outdoor events, you know, I kind of put those probably in the same category. I think people can voluntarily come to those types of things. They're outdoors. You know, we can still promote that people wear masks. And I think any vendors that are out there, I think should probably be looking at wearing masks if they're providing food services and those types of things. But I think, my personal feeling is, I think we can tell those organizations that maybe kind of plan for this. I want the input of the council before we get the word out to people on those things.
Yeah, I think, you know, unless whatever recommendations come from the CDC, it would be different at the time. But now, I would think so.
Okay. But if you've got a major indoor gathering, it still may need to stay away from those types of things. You know, like the school, I think we generally have a coral festival and bringing a bunch of kids sing inside of a confined facility is probably not a good thing to do. But we're not involved in that. I guess that's the school's decision to look at doing that. But I guess if it's an outdoor activity, the other thing that came up, the carnival here in town, you know, which is basically an outdoor activity, I, I don't know if we should say that we let the carnival come to town. But they generally do that while the same time that they do the car show. Kind of the same, same type of thing. Are merely outdoor. So, does the council have any issues with that? I guess there's no real action we need to take other than just have a discussion. If we've got some strong feelings that it's not in the best interest of our community from a health standpoint to do those things, I guess we, maybe need to modify a few things. I guess other than to encourage people to, you know, wear masks, if there are vendors and that type of thing in those areas, I don't know. You know, that we necessarily can make a requirement, but we can just encourage. That's the, I don't think we're interested in enacting an ordinance for that purpose. So I just wanted to have that discussion. Does anybody have anything more to add to that thought process? We'll get the word out then, that we are people, so take it to the car show. Okay, mayor and council, well, the district meeting is going to be virtual this year, the municipal meeting. So I think there's some information going to be out there. So if you want to participate in the district meeting, you can do it virtually this year. And I think, I think all the council members will be forwarding. The other thing we can make arrangements for here is, we can do it here in this room, you know, if you wanted to.
Yep, that's what I was suggesting, anyone who wants to do it here can, or if you just prefer to do it at home on your own person.
And the other thing I think, I don't know, but we could maybe have a little food. Is there a good opportunity to cook up that turkey? We got a turkey from our engineer that's still in the refrigerator, a freezer, so. For what we authorized, next year, I think we need to have three turkeys. Okay, we've got that. Okay, we got that. And what's the date on that, if you recall?
Yeah, it is March 16th at 5:30 PM.
And let's mark that down and we'll send out a reminder to everybody.
Yeah, if you want to participate in it on your own, I need to have your email to provide to them because they send a link directly to you. But if you're going to participate here, then just use our equipment, so.
Okay, council reports. Whigley, it's over. Stapleton, just, Apple.
Just real quick, I've had a few complaints about the sidewalks in front of businesses on veterans and some bus stops that are pretty icy. And I didn't, I let you know about those, I think you got a hold of them. I sent a long letter that you probably got a copy of. So just some reports that are still...
Okay, I didn't address anything when I met anyone on veterans. So I didn't know specifically.
Okay, the mayor doesn't have anything tonight. Well, I'm meeting, I don't think I hear your comments, I brought something down. Their motion adjourned. Just for a second. Stapleton, all in favor, aye? Ballot, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift, for all your pond needs. Countryside Inn, assisted living and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton, for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis, right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.